All right, good morning. Thank you so much for everybody that had the opportunity to be here. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is our regular commission meeting for May 23rd. As we start every meeting off, we're so honored to be able to have with us here today Pastor Mike Brown with West Florida Baptist Church. So if you will stand with us, he's gonna lead us in a word of prayer, and I'll ask Commissioner Peach to lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for today. Thank you for the privilege that we have to be here, to be a part of this community. Lord, I'm thankful for our country. I'm thankful for this upcoming weekend and what it represents. Thank you for the men and women who have laid down their lives to protect the freedoms that we enjoy. Lord, most importantly, we're thankful for you, and we're thankful for what you did for us on the cross and for the salvation that we can have in you and the life that we can have, the abundant life that we can have when we trust you as our Savior. Pray that you'd be with this meeting today. Thank you for these leaders that you've given to us. Thank you for their willingness to put themselves open to scrutiny and the different things that come with leadership because of their desire to make a difference in this county. I pray that you give wisdom and direction, and we'll thank you and praise you for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please, George, we can pledge our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, now, before we move on, I'd like to get the approval of the minutes out of the way for the April 23rd and the April 9th meeting. Is there anyone here in objection to approving the minutes? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move those for approval. Next item would be approval of today's agenda. I'm gonna start with my far right with Commissioner Peach. Do we have any amendments to today's agenda that we need to make?
No changes to current agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
No changes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Stan?
Just highlighting things that were different from where we left on Monday. There are two additional items, one bid item on custodial services. I've talked with Commissioner Peach, the committee chair there. SOD replacement at Navarre. Football and soccer park is time critical, and without the first meeting in June, we added that to this agenda today.
No changes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and approve today's agenda as published. First, we're very honored to be able to give a proclamation today and support a Memorial Day, and I've asked Commissioner Peach to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County of Santa Rosa proclamation. Whereas since 1868, Memorial Day has been uniquely an American day of remembrance, on which we pay our respects and honor the memory of more than 1 million Americans who died in battle and made the ultimate sacrifice for our country and our freedoms. And whereas in keeping with the traditions that have preceded us, many of us have friends and family members who have selflessly given themselves to the future of this great nation and who we honor on this day. And whereas these soldiers were someone's child, someone's spouse, someone's parent, and it is important that we remember every day in this great nation that our freedom came at a price. And whereas veterans have bravely served in all parts of the world, not only fighting for our freedoms, but for all mankind. And whereas Santa Rosa County joins with other counties throughout the state of Florida and the United States of America in honoring those who have given their lives and recognizing that their sacrifices were noble, their heroism unparalleled, and their dedication to God and country unforgettable. Now therefore be it proclaimed that May 27, 2019 be observed as Memorial Day in Santa Rosa County, in remembrance and in honor of the veterans who have given their lives in the service of our country, signed by our chairman, Sam Parker.
Thinking, I believe, if you'll correct me if I'm wrong, are giving a presentation down in Navarre on Monday?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll be reading this proclamation at 11 o'clock in Navarre Park for their Memorial Day service.
Thank you. Next, we've got several presentations here today. We'll just take them in order of how they're published on the agenda. I remember one is an update on the opioid litigation, so I believe we may have Mr. Barr or Mr. Higby here with us today?
I think we have Mr. Higby, Mr. Gaddy, and Mr. Dampier.
I won't tell you the nickname we used to give for Mr. Gaddy, but it's always good to see him.
Good morning. Our city, this is Jeff Gaddy from the Levitt Papantonio Firm. I haven't met you before. I think Mr. Gaddy and our colleague, Mr. Dampier from Mobile, were here about nine, 10 months ago, but thank you for allowing us to be here today. We're here to give you a brief update on the opioid litigation, which is ongoing. There's what's called a multi-district litigation pending up in Ohio, in Cleveland, Ohio. The Santa Rosa case is one of over 600 cases that our group of attorneys represents. And last week, I had the privilege of being in Charlotte, North Carolina. There was a regional meeting with representatives from counties, from Maryland, Kentucky, West Virginia, Tennessee, Georgia. Florida will have its own meeting soon, but you all may not know this, but the group of lawyers that is representing Santa Rosa County, we also represent eight or nine other counties all throughout Northwest Florida, Bay, Jackson, Holmes, Calhoun, Gulf County, Escambia County, and the city of Panama City as well. Before I turn it over to Jeff, I just wanna say a couple things. My office has worked with Mr. Andrews. We've done some initial responding or answering to discovery in this case. There's what's called a plaintiff's fact sheet. It took a lot of work, and I wanna give a shout out to Mr. Andrews and to your county staff for taking the time and putting in the effort to get that done. It's very important in the long-term scheme of things, and I just wanted to thank Roy for that. At this point, I want to tell you, you're very fortunate to have Jeff Gaddy here. I know you all, they know him. He used to be a state attorney here in Santa Rosa County, in Milton. Jeff is a lawyer who, from my observation, is at the forefront of the ongoing discovery and taking depositions of corporate people and accumulating the DEA data on this crisis, on this epidemic. And he just happened not to be taking depositions this week, and I can tell you from watching him last week up in Charlotte, he knows what all is going on. So rather than me give you the watered-down version, I'm gonna let Jeff take over and give you the nitty-gritty.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you again. I am Jeff Gaddy. I'm with the Levitt Papantonio Law Firm, and I'm gonna give you kind of a broad overview of where we are in the litigation, and I'd be happy to take any questions y'all have about any of the details or anything that I talk about. Santa Rosa County's case was filed here locally in federal court. It was then transferred up to Cleveland, Ohio, in front of Judge Polster. He's the judge, the one federal judge in the country that has been assigned all of these cases that have been filed by local governments. There's approximately 1,700 cases that have been consolidated in front of Judge Polster up in Cleveland. One of the first things that he did was select what we call a bellwether or test trial. The test trials are going to be Cuyahoga and Summit Counties, Ohio. Cuyahoga is the county that holds Cleveland. Summit County is the county that holds the city of Akron. Those cases are set to be tried together, and they're set for trial, the jury selection commencing on October 21st. Ever since that trial schedule was announced last summer, we've been aggressively working towards getting to trial. One of the, one client of ours is the city of Cleveland, so we've been actively involved in the trial preparation process from day one. Last summer, we went through the, kinda what I would call the document production phase. We got tens of millions of pages of documents from the 22 defendants that are listed in the case. We also had to collect documents from our own clients and produce those to the defense. In November, December, and January, our group took about 300 depositions all over the country. Took depositions in Chicago, took depositions up in Washington DC, in Pittsburgh, all over the place, getting ready for trial. That fact discovery period ended at the end of January, and from there, we moved into the expert phase. Each side will retain and present expert witnesses to prove its case at trial. In March, we disclosed about 25 experts. Those experts include former DEA agents. They include public health economists who can study areas and determine how much money has been spent treating and dealing with the opioid crisis. It also includes epidemiologists and public health forecasters who can talk about how much money would be needed to abate the nuisance, to fix the problem. So those are the types of experts that we retained and listed. We disclosed those in March. In April, we spent about four weeks defending our experts being deposed by the other side. About two weeks ago, the defense had to list their experts. They listed, I believe, 73. It's the most, this is without a doubt the most complex litigation that's ever, ever happened in this country. A lot of folks compare it to tobacco. It's night and day different than tobacco as far as its size and scope because of the number of different entities and the types of entities that are involved. We start taking depositions of their experts actually today. The first one started this morning at 9:00 in Chicago, and those will continue for the next three weeks. Once those expert depositions are done, we'll get into the, to kinda what I would call the law and briefing mode, where they will, the defense will file motions to challenge our experts. We may or may not try to challenge some of their experts. Usually, that's not the best strategy, but we may do that with some. And the other thing that will happen is there'll be motions for summary judgment filed, arguments made by both sides that, hey, the evidence that's been gathered so far proves with certainty that certain facts or certain legal theories do or do not apply in the case. All of that's gonna be happening over the next couple of months, all leading up to this October 21st trial date. That's not the only thing that's happening. The other thing that the judge did was he went ahead and announced the second trial. Second trial is gonna be Cabell County, West Virginia. That's where the city of Huntington lives. That's one of the hardest-hit counties in the country. They're the number-three county in the country as far as deaths per capita. The stories that we hear from that particular location are horrific. Cabell County is a client of ours, so we will be also very involved in that trial. We've already had some meetings. I was up there last week, meeting with the local government there and the Health Department and the Sheriff's Office, and talking about how to prepare that case for trial. In addition to all the litigation aspects that I've been talking about, the judge also from day one ordered for there to be settlement negotiations ongoing. So those have been happening since about February of last year. The judge has put some pretty strict limitations as to what we can and can't say about the settlement negotiations, but needless to say, they are progressing. They are happening. They're going better with some defendants than with others. I don't expect there to be any settlement announcement today or next week, but certainly, as we move closer to the trial date, I think that that's something that could potentially happen. It also could not happen, and we could end up in a trial with a lot of these, a lot of these different defendants. If you followed the news about the opioid litigation generally at all, Oklahoma got one of the first, the Oklahoma Attorney General had one of the first settlements in the country. They settled with Purdue for $270 million. The reason they got that settlement is because they are about four weeks away from trial. There are still two defendants left in the Oklahoma Attorney General case. It is Johnson &amp; Johnson and Teva, who are both manufacturers of opioids. They're still in the case, and that trial's scheduled to start next Tuesday up in Oklahoma. So what we learned, or what we knew and what should hopefully be obvious from Oklahoma is that trial pressure is what leads to resolution, and that's what we've been trying to maintain in the MDL. We have the next trial date, that October one, and so we're gonna continue to push towards that. Outside of the Northern Ohio cases and the Cabell County cases, every other case has stayed, meaning that there's no deadlines, no work to be done, and everything will sit tight while we let these first couple of cases play out and see, you know, how a jury reacts to the facts that we're able to present. So with that overview, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any board have any questions? I'd like to, I appreciate your work. I'm fortunate enough to have a long relationship with Mr. Gaddy. I tell you, hopefully, y'all will be able to have a positive outcome for this, and I appreciate the gentleman sharing the accolades to your hard work. I know you were always definitely right there, one of the top fellows at the State Attorney's Office, enjoyed working with you, so love to see, maybe hopefully in a few years, we'll see your name on the building too, but we appreciate all your, all your work you're doing for us, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Cole?
Mr. Gaddy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. Can you, what, the premise of the lawsuit, is it, can you explain that?
Sure, and so let me kinda give you an overview of that, and please interrupt me with questions as I talk about it. The essential theory of the case is that these companies have created a public nuisance here within Santa Rosa County and in many communities across the country. The defendants in this litigation essentially fall into two categories. One would be manufacturers of opioids, such as Purdue, who you've probably seen and heard a lot about in the media. The second type of entity that's a defendant in this litigation would be the distributors of opioids, and the theories are different against the two different types of entities. So as it relates to the manufacturers, the theories are that decades ago, you know, nobody would have prescribed opioids for long-term treatment for pain management because everybody knew it was addictive. And so essentially, the theory is that what happened is these manufacturers, such as Purdue's, the Johnson &amp; Johnson's, the Tevas, the Malincrets, all these different manufacturers, manipulated the science and persuaded the medical community that it was okay to prescribe opioids for long-term pain management. That campaign was incredibly successful, and as a result of that, the amount of prescribing for these pills that was done increased dramatically. And we've seen that in the amount of pills that were shipped into all these different communities, and we know it's an error because the medical community has finally realized that they were duped by some of these sales tactics, and the amount of pills has started to come down dramatically. The DEA's started to get their arms around it. They've started to take aggressive actions to lower the amount of pills that these companies are allowed to manufacture and pump into our communities. The distributor theory's different. The distributors have regulations that require them to be on the lookout for any suspicious orders of opioids, essentially anything that would be, any orders that are too large, too frequent, or just really don't pass the smell test. And what we find over and over again, as we get into these companies' records, is they didn't look out for those suspicious orders, and what they did was they looked for reasons to fill suspicious orders. So there, some of the examples would be you'd have a town in West Virginia that has about 750 people in it, and you'd have a company that's shipping them 2 million pills a year. That just doesn't make any sense under any scenario. And so that's the theory against the distributors, is that they took proactive steps to flood the market with more pills than were necessary. They had a duty to know that they were flooding the market, and instead of following that duty, they continued to ship the pills.
I appreciate that explanation because, you know, as a citizen that's not involved in this, I've been, I've been prescribed, I hope always so has my wife and family members, but fortunately, had a common sense enough to not take them. So you ask, okay, where's your personal responsibility not to do this? So I appreciate the explanation of how they were duped and how, you know, a person, a citizen that's prescribed something by his physician is gonna follow physician's orders and do what the physician says to do. So I appreciate that, because I just personally, I just wondered that, you know, where is the personal responsibility, where's the doctor's responsibility? But if they're given directions from the medical profession in general and the manufacturers, like you explained, that helps me a lot understand the justifying of lawsuits.
It does, and one thing I would, one exercise I would suggest that you just partake in is if you have any friends or colleagues who are physicians, ask them how much training they got in medical school on pain management, and what you'll hear almost across the board is zero. And their training came from continuing medical education conferences and from the sales reps that came into the office to sell them their drugs that, of course, worked for the companies that were trying to sell the drugs. And because we get that question a lot, about where does the true responsibility lie? And when you peek behind the curtain and see where some of these, some of these folks were getting their education, it was from the folks who were pushing the pills.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Call any town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, the world-renowned engineer, Michael Schmidt, coming up here to give us a presentation, so we are very appreciative to get an update of the engineering projects going on.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning.
Little bit happier subject.
Yeah. Do I have a remote? Who's, oh, who's doing it? You are? Dan is? Okay.
He's just gonna self-automate.
Okay, I'll just move on. Well, I first wanna thank Dan Administration for allowing us to do this. Roger's gonna talk about the enterprise funds in a moment, but...
Now you're doing it.
Now I'm doing it, okay. Roger's gonna talk in a little bit about the enterprise fund, but currently, engineering has about 30 projects ongoing. Now, for time management, we're only gonna go about, go through about 16 of these, but if you got any questions while I'm bringing them up, just, you know, let me know. First one is Benny Russell Park. Benny Russell Park started in early 2018 with a lot of community meetings. Mr. Parker was involved. We had our consultant involved, and out of that came a number of things. And you see the five phases here, and those phases include multipurpose fields, kids' play area, splash pad, walking trails, and a possible future location for, you know, a YMCA. It's currently being designed as a five-phase build-out, and the master plan has been initiated. They're about 90% complete, and permit submission, we anticipate sometime this summer. Total build-out cost, and I apologize, it says 18.2. That is incorrect. When I looked at it this morning, it's actually 15 million. However, it's the Phase 1 that's of most importance currently, and that design cost is at an estimated 2.9 million. And that's gonna include an improved parking and the splash pad, a bathroom facility, and drainage infrastructure to handle that additional work. Project number two, Pace Patterson Drainage. We've been real fortunate with our HMGP program, this being one of many. They all have been successful. They've all worked wonderful, this included. This project was funded through the HMGP program based on a 2014 flood event. Project was actually completed in 2018. It helped increase the flood protection to 26 structures, 10 of which had quite a bit of recurring flooding. And the area is located, it's south of Highway 90 along Pace Lane, Patterson Lane, Faircloth, Matthew, and Overlook, Overlook Circle. Construction budget was 1.034 million, and we had a matching of $353,000, and of that, all of that was LOST-funded. P Ridge Connector. That's gonna be a north-south connector between Hamilton Bridge Road and Highway 90. Currently, it's near 60% complete. We've got it set for a December completion design. It's obviously gonna help eliminate or reduce the traffic on Spencer Field, Highway 90, Hamilton Bridge Road, and Glover. And this project is a $1.4 million design, and it's funded entirely with LOST... And this project is a $1.4 million design, and it's funded entirely with LOST, Local Option Sales Tax funding. King Middle School is a LAP, a local agency project funded through the FDOT. This project is a sidewalk project. It's west of Stewart Street, and the sidewalks will run along Rosasco and Byram Street. And it's going to provide safe routing and pedestrian access to, to King Middle School. The design is complete. It is going to be bid in the summer of this year. And the funding was 253, well, $254,000 for FDOT and a joint venture between the City of Milton and the county at around $54,000.
Mr. Chairman, Mike.
Commissioner Cole.
Mike, didn't we extend this project down on Mary Street and Canal also? Isn't there?
We may have. Let me, I can verify that, and I'll get back with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The I-10 Industrial Park. This project was completed in 2018, and it included a secondary entrance to the existing park, about 1,400 linear feet of industrial roadway. I mention that because an industrial roadway is different than a commercial or a residential road. Water and sewer infrastructure along the new roadway and additional stormwater infrastructure. And it was entirely, well, it wasn't entirely, mostly was a general appropriation, but the construction cost was 1.1 million, and the county came up with the exact, the extra Randy Brown Road. Randy Brown Road is going to be an interconnection between Jeff Yates and Randy Brown Road. That interconnection continues through the industrial park to Armstrong Aviation Drive and then North Airport Boulevard. This all started as a safety issue because of some derailments, closing Jeff Yates Road, not allowing people to get out of that area. The design is complete, and right now, the estimated construction cost is $5 million.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
You'll have to, excuse me, this is the first I've seen of the completed design. I thought we were going to, this north, where you have the holding pond, I guess we're going to extend the holding pond that's there currently.
Yes, sir.
Looks like.
Mm-hmm.
Did we not talk to Gulf Power about moving that holding pond into that upper corner of their property?
We can, but it's really not six, one half dozen of the other. Where you put it, you're going to have to have it somewhere, whether it's on Gulf Power's property or whether it's on ours.
It eats up some more of East Milton Park. I know it's a big park.
And Roger and I talked about that earlier. It does, but it's really not any area that you're currently using. We purposely looked at what it would eat up, and it's really not taking any usable space away from the park.
I kind of disagree with that, so I'd.
We can discuss it more. It can be moved. We just felt like this was the easiest route to take.
Because Gulf Power was real willing to, to get the road completed. They were willing, you know, over a year ago, since I spoke to them, but I thought we were going that direction.
Okay.
To let us have some property for that.
Commissioner, we'll look at it. But based on our look, when we took a look at it, it really didn't affect the park all that much. I mean, there's really not much in that area, and it's really just expanding what's out there now.
I know.
But again, we'll look at it.
Which I don't, I don't even like that pond being there.
I agree. I agree. But we need to do, put the drainage infrastructure. I'm sure you're aware of that. You know, the ponds need to go somewhere.
Yeah. All right. If we can take a look at Gulf Power.
Look at it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Michael, just so I'm clear, the one there up behind the building, is that an existing one?
As part of the Jeff Yates Arena, we had a small pond placed there.
So that one's existing?
It's existing. And we are really just going to expand upon that and kind of pull that footprint out to the east and the west a little bit, and just expand what's out there.
Okay, yeah. So you were talking about moving this one here?
The, the blue, I think what Commissioner Cole was suggesting is there's a blue area just south of the Jeff Yates Arena. Swap that further down and to the left or to the west, onto Gulf Power's property.
Okay, that's what I thought he was talking about, and then I thought you mentioned something about that one being existing.
Well, it is. There's, there's an existing.
Is that, that's not the Agriplex right there, though?
It is.
It's the arena, it's not the Agriplex.
Because now, I guess more of this has been cleared out since then, since that picture? Just trying to think for one of them out there at the, at the fair, I guess I'm.
No, if, Mike, show, well, show them on the screen. The, the large building with the blue pond below it is Jeff, Jeff Yates, or June Yates Arena.
Right.
The clearing north of that, you've got a tree line, and then a clearing north of that, that's the fairgrounds. Okay? You see what I'm talking about?
Okay.
All right. Then I've talked to Gulf Power when we first started this about using that, you see that strip of trees across the bottom, south of the prison?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, using that upper right corner of their property for a holding pond. We do have a small holding pond directly south of the June Yates Arena, but I'd hate to expand it all the way across there.
Okay. All right. Just trying to follow the conversation. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Whiting Aviation Park. This is a 269-acre commercial industrial park adjacent to the Whiting East Gate. This started long ago, but it really grew legs after the master plan update in, in 2011. We have $8.5 million of Triumph funding, and, but the current project is only 40 acres. If you look at the blue area to the north and to the left, that is the area, the 40 acres that we're currently going to develop under this $8.5 million Triumph grant. Of course, the goal is to attract aviation and defense-related companies. We have a through-gate arrangement with, with Whiting Field. The design is complete, oh, the design will be completed in August, excuse me. We'll have a contractor selected in the August, September timeframe, and we anticipate construction starting around the end of November, October.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Come back. Maybe we should have had a briefing on this prior. If we develop the blue area, are we going to go ahead and develop the accessibility to the runway along with that?
No.
How are we going to sell the property or sell somebody in the aviation industry to come on to the blue area that we've spent all this money on, but oh, by the way, you can't get to the runway?
No, they can. The aviation-related industries that are currently interested in the property are either going to be maintenance facilities or training facilities, and they have access through the East Gate, and they can get in and out through there.
I'm talking about aircraft. You aren't going to take aircraft through the East Gate.
That would require another design effort, and that effort's going to quite, cost quite a bit of money because there's quite a bit of fill that's necessary on the south and west portion of that property to access that, to make that connection.
Okay. That was the idea of the whole park.
Yes, sir.
Having access to that. So I, I got a hard time putting all this money into it and still can't get to the runway.
The, the initial project, this first phase that we scoped for the Triumph application was to get the aviation park started. It does not provide access, runway access. And the companies, and Shannon can, I can set up a meeting with you and Shannon and Erica, the, the companies that are currently interested don't require access to the runway. We have a half dozen different defense-related companies that Shannon is working with now that are, that are interested in the property without runway access. Developing the rest of that is, is probably an additional $20 million project because of the level of fill and site work required. So we took a, a section that we knew we could, could manage, we knew we could afford, and that Triumph supported, that does support the economic development there in the park.
Well, you know, I'm sure if I got questions, the public got questions, we need to get it out there, so. Not putting you on the spot, Mike, just.
Nope, nope.
Okay.
Good answer.
Thank you.
Fidelis Park. My understanding is, am I wrong?
We're going to talk about this next.
Is Sheila come? So let me just make one point. It's a grant, District 3 Recreational Funds and LOST. And we're going to have some park amenities. So let me just stop right there and let Sheila brief you better on, on where this is going and what's going to happen. Spring Street Sidewalks. This is a local agency FDOT grant. The, it's the final phase of a two-mile walking loop, and it's going to connect J High School to the Town of J. It'll bid this summer, and funding estimates are about $666,000 from FDOT and $80,000 from the county, and that's coming from the Transportation Impact Fee Fund. Tom King Bayou Pedestrian Bridge. This is another local agency project with the FDOT, and it's a pedestrian bridge that's going to connect two sidewalks that are currently being built. I think Stephen's working on those currently. This will include an eight-foot-wide multi-use trail, which will include the bridge. The RFP for design has been advertised, and we'll put a recommendation out before you sometime this summer. And the design costs are estimated at about $185,000, and that's FDOT funding.
Do we have a proposed timeline on this that, because I get a lot of questions on this, especially since we started work back on the paths now? You know, if we could have like a, hey, design, it would be rough, you know, not exact. We never hold it too exact, but, you know, here's the design period, here's where we'd go out, here's what we're looking at, so we don't have the sidewalks to nowhere when.
If you ask me today, I'll say a year.
Okay.
I will change my mind and update that once I get a consultant on board and we can talk to them and see what permitting issues are involved and what's all involved in, in getting this thing done. And then I can give you a more realistic answer. But if, if you're asking me today, 12 months.
Okay.
So.
For design?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, not all that's designed.
Right.
Everything's so involved with a permit these days.
Yeah, no, I understand. I just like to deal with, you know, I deal with expectation management for folks.
I understand.
Because if I told them a year, they'd expect the bridge to be done in a year.
Exactly.
So I really like to be able to give them that expectation management.
I can brief you better when I, when I have more information.
Expectation management?
Please, feel free.
I don't have a patent on it.
Give me a second. Of our master plan, the design is actually complete. It's actually planning and zoning, Corps of Engineers, us, FDEP, we're all looking at it now. So the permits are being, being reviewed. Park amenities include, you know, splash pad, playground, walkways, waterfront picnic areas, picnic shelters, additional parking with improved handicapped access. This plan was funded through TDC Reserves at 394,000, and we're currently going to rebid the Phase 1 portion of this project.
You're talking about rebid construction?
Yeah.
The, the design is.
Design is complete. Design's complete. Yes, sir. Camden Drive, Phase 1. This is, this was in the Hollyby the Sea Drainage Basin, and this Phase 1 project is to improve the existing drainage by replacing existing boss culverts and mitred end sections along the streets. Phase 2 of this project is more involved in the permitting aspect of cleaning out ditches. Any ditch, man-made or not nowadays, is deemed a wetland if it even looks damp. So you've got to go through the core process. That's a year. We are currently working through those permits, and that's where we stand. This project, though, Phase 1, they should be completing this project in June. And the funding was $850,000 from Roden Bridge Reserves, and $650,000 was a legislative, legislative appropriation.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Michael, too, just, I mean, they're doing a great job because that's right in my area over there. The one thing I would ask, I know Stephen's getting ready to pave Sherwood, and we're holding off on that until this project's done, but some of their road cuts, I understand them, that they're going to stay gravel for, but if we could just make sure the contractor keeps those road cuts smoothed out, because some of them can get pretty rough. And that's why I hear most, people appreciate the project, but when the gravel patches while they're waiting get wore out.
We try to keep up with that.
Yeah.
But it's complaint-driven. When I get a call, they'll fix it right away. But if I know about it, please let me know.
Have them take a look.
Okay. Sunrise Drive Entrance. This project was completed in July of last year. It was an intersection improvement. We actually raised the road approximately two feet to reduce the frequency of the flooding, added some ADA accessible crosswalks. Funding was entirely LOST, Local Option Sales Tax, at $182,000. And this really all began in 2016. We had the Holly Navar Drainage Study that was done, and the spin-off of that, and this is not in this presentation, but I feel like I need to mention these, has been tremendous. And I'll go through a list real quick here. We've got a Sunrise Drive north that's currently under design. We have the Hollyby the Sea easement maintenance plan, which has been bid. We've got contractors ready to roll on that. We've got a Tom King Bayou East Branch, which is being designed. We've got the East Bay Boulevard culvert upgrades, which is about 90% complete. I should be getting plans shortly. Got the Edgewood Drive Drainage and Multi-Use Path that's, that's coming online. They're designing that now. And we've got the West Williams Creek Stream Restoration. All of those, again, not in this document here, but need to be mentioned because the spin-off of that study has been tremendous, and we're making good use of it. And most of these projects that I just mentioned are LOST-funded. Venetian Way, Settlers Colony. Again, these are HMGP projects, always been successful. They've, they've really done a great job in all the areas that we've been able and successful to, to complete them. This is basically, this is three projects. We've got the Venetian Way, Cornaut Drive, we've got Settlers Colony, Venetian Way, and we've got Settlers Colony, Alamo Marine. All three projects are under construction. Of course, they're all there to improve the drainage and increase flood protection, and they'll all be completed in fall of this, this year. Total construction cost for all three is 6.5 million, and 2.2 million was the match, and it was, again, that was all done through Local Option Sales Tax funding. The Oriole Beach and Woodlawn Beach Seawall Replacement. Those designs are complete. Funding was through Fish and Wildlife Grant. And we're currently permitting, although I'll have to say we're being delayed, the permit requirements have changed recently with the Core, and we're trying to work through those little glitches. The design I currently have doesn't meet the Core's new design criteria, so we have to make some adjustments. And once we make those, we'll resubmit, and we'll, we'll permit and get to construction.
Go ahead, Mike. Michael, so we're still in the permitting phase. We don't have construction. This, this will go out for bid for construction in the future?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. When we, can we coordinate the construction so that it doesn't occur in a high time for voting?
Sure, we can do that. Yeah, that's easy to do.
We've had, just had some questions about that. Okay. And so we're probably looking construction 2020?
It's the Core. Need I say more? They don't have a timeline, and, and their, their criteria has recently changed. The pier's got to be five feet high now.
Right.
The pier has to have half-inch slits between the decking. They can only be four feet wide. Some of those don't match up with ADA requirements, so we're trying to work through all these issues. And it's just something we just got to design around. But when we get to those, per may, it could be six months, it could be a year.
Okay.
Hopefully not. I mean, hopefully they'll look at it and they can, they can sign off on it.
Okay. Are there any repairs that need to be made for safety?
If they are, we'll get with, we'll coordinate with Roden Bridge and see what we can do to make those arrangements.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Michael, I just got to take a moment and make a comment. I attend the NACO National Association of Counties Meeting. On several occasions, we've had hierarchy from the Army Corps of Engineers come in and tell us how easy they are to work with, how quick they are to work with, how they want to work with communities to get projects done. And when I spoke up to the gentleman and told him I didn't think he was telling us the correct information, he, he kind of backpedaled a little bit, so. So if there's anything that seems outlandish, I've met several of the people from the Corps, or we need to send a letter up to National Association of Counties and say, look, you know, we heard all this from, you know, from speakers from the Corps, you know, out of DC. How comes they're not holding true to what they're telling us at these national conventions? And, you know, if things seem like, you know, to you as an engineer, well, that's a reasonable change, that's a reasonable amount of time, then, you know, we all got to live with that. But if something seems, you know, out of sorts, then I think we need to address it.
Okay. I'll know more at the end of the week. Shelly Alexander with the Grants Department is meeting with the Corps this week, and she's going to discuss those issues, see where we're at. Miracle League. Project was completed just last month. BDI donated $25,500 for the design. The county had $18,000. I think that was your rec funds. Construction cost totaled about $350,000. I think currently they're working on some ADA accessible sidewalks now. They should be completed soon. Of course, this area converted the old T-ball field into an ADA-compliant field and provides opportunities for all children and adults with disabilities to play ball. And it's a very nice facility, if you've been out there to look at it. It's very nice-looking. And with that, I'm going to throw it to Roger on the Enterprise Fund.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions for Michael before he departs? I've invited Ron Hicks, my environmental manager, to speak on the Enterprise Fund relative to the Central landfill. With that, go ahead, Ron.
All right. So we have four projects we're going to discuss today. Obviously, the first is the Phase Five Cell A construction that is currently ongoing.
Ron, if you will, for my benefit, just as you talk about these, do you mind telling me on the map where I'm, where I'm from that area, like, what section am I looking at? Just so I can make sure I'm tracking with you.
All right. So the bottom photo is the actual Phase Five Cell A construction. That's most of the Cell A. And then on the top...
I guess, is that in that sort of, what would that be, southwest corner?
Yes.
Okay.
All the way towards the back row, following the railroad tracks around. So that's the Cell A. It's a 15-acre cell. If you remember last, 2017, we started Phase Five. We permitted about 88, 90 acres for future development. The first of that cell was Cell A, 15 acres. That was a $10 million project, included about 1.3 million in design and permitting fees. Right now, they are about 75% complete on the excavation and liner placement, leach aid storage system. All Phase A was, was, we were currently in Phase Four Cell A. That was the last permitted cell for Central landfill. So we had to go back out and expand our permanent area. That was the 88 acres. In that 88 acres, there's five or six cells. Cell A is the first one. But that also included a new leach aid collection system. That's about an 8-million-gallon leach aid pond, about 19 acres of improved stormwater management ponds. As I said, the cell's about 75% complete. The leach aid system is about 95% complete. Leach aid storage ponds have already been certified by DEP for use. The stormwater system is about 95% complete. They're projected to finish in June or July. It'll be about a month or so to get it certified, so we look to be able to place waste in that cell sometime in September. Once Cell A is complete, you have approximately 48 acres left in five cells. That'll take you out about 50, 60 years of storage capacity for Class A, or for Class One waste. The Class Three cell, which is to the east, is that long section line along the Central Road. That has about an eight- or nine-year disposal capacity left. So for, as far as disposal capacity, Central's good for Class One for 40, 50 years, 60 years. For Class Three, it's good for about another 10 years. The next system, or the next project, is expansion of the landfill gas collection system. We put in a gas collection system about five years ago, and by regulatory rules, you have to expand that system once you go into your next cell within five years. So that will expand into Cell C, our current cell. The permitting design of that was $100,000. Estimated construction is about $1 million. That adds about 15, 20 new gas extraction wells. It also upgrades some components on the flare station. The design is about 70% complete. We look to go out for bid sometime this summer for construction. Should start construction in the fall and finish early spring.
Mr. Chairman.
Ron, what's that, I know we, our target is to get to enough capacity to be able to either cogenerate or find a buyer for, so we don't have to flare. Where are we at with that on capacity?
We're still working on that. We're still looking at, you have to have an end user, which for us would probably be one of the haulers. When we originally, we had Waste Management, Waste Pro, in ECUA with the three haulers. ECUA has their own gas system for their trucks at their facility. Waste Management was not interested in bringing in CNG trucks. Their number of trucks in the county didn't make it economically feasible for them to do it. Waste Pro will do it, but that, again, goes to, you know, how many trucks they have. We really needed two of them to do it to make it a feasible project. It's about $1 million and a half dollars to do landfill gas, to methane, to compressed natural gas.
All right.
And so you need a fairly good market to get that done.
How about changing out our own equipment?
We could. We looked at if the compactors, those and all that, they are moving in that direction. They have tractor-trailers, obviously, long-haul tractor-trailers that use CNG. They're not quite there still on construction equipment. But they're working on it. The other one we looked at was electrical generation.
Yeah.
Again, the cost to do electrical generation was like a mil, mil and a half. The problem with electric generation is none of the power lines along Central can hold that power. They would have to build what was called a fast feeder to an Avalon substation. That added another million and a half to the project. That's $3 million. Payback for that was 40, 50 years, because you get paid back avoided cost, which is 3, 4 cents a kilowatt hour. So we're still not there yet. We're still working on it. We just haven't found an outcome for that. There are some, there is a possibility, some people are working on a cheaper way to take landfill gas and make it into natural gas quality. That means it really, it has to be really clean. That's a very expensive process, has been in the past, and usually you needed 1,000, 1,200, or 2,000 SCFM to get to that break-even point. We're about 5, 600 SCFM is what we're projected to be. So we, that, if the new processes pan out, we may be able to do that, but they're not there yet either. So we're still looking at it. We just haven't got there yet.
Thank you.
So that, we expect the construction to do in fall of 2019, and then complete in the spring of 2020. The next is the new scale house and front entrance improvements. That's about $400 in design fees, about a $1.4 million construction. That's going to improve the entrance. It's going to move the entrance a little to the east, move the scale house to the south a little bit, rebuild the scale house. The scale house we have is 25, 30 years old, and it literally has fallen apart. We've replaced parts of the floor, parts of the windows. So all that's going to improve that. It's going to give you a longer queue coming in. It's going to have a new commercial scale. That is about, like I said, 70 or 95% complete. We expect to bid that out this summer, go to construction this fall, and it will finish up sometime in the spring of 2020.
Question for you, Ron. You know, we have a problem there on Deleese Road with traffic backing up when it gets...
Right. And that's one of the reasons to move it in a little more, to get it, give you a longer queue area, and then hopefully get the commercial trucks out of that line to go across the commercial scale, so they don't have to weigh in.
Okay. So when you said move more to the east, are we also going to move the entrance further to the east where we can use that frontage?
Yeah. Right now, there's a, well, the entrance is now right to the east that there's a construction entrance. That's where the new entrance is going to be.
Do you think perhaps we should move it even further to the east? So we have all that frontage as a queuing lane?
We're limited on, and I think Roger can explain that, is that you have other roads coming in from the other side, and you have to have a certain distance between exits from that road. So that's pretty much as far east as we can go. The other thing we wanted to do is if we did a CNG facility to the east of that road is where that CNG filling station would go. So we left room for that if it comes up, and we can actually do it.
I just want to get as much queuing lane as we can along there, because...
And that's what we're doing, like, again, by moving the road to the, the entrance to the east and moving the scale house further into the south.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
That's going to, that's going to at least double your queuing area.
Will the Board get to look at the plans prior to going out to bid?
Yeah, we can do that. We can come around and show you the plans. But, you know, the other part of that is if we put the commercial scale in, then the garbage trucks aren't waiting in line with everybody else. They can go on to the west of those and go right across the scale and then go in.
All right. Is the new facility going to use more modern technology, where we don't have a person at the window for, I could see a person at the window for the, for public access and pickup trucks, but the commercial access, is it going to be, since we know who our customers are pretty much, are they going to have any kind of electronic ability?
They're going to have either a keypad or a fob or card, where they can pull up on a scale. They either swipe the card or the fob, and it automatically downloads everything to their file, and then they just drive off.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
So it should speed that up quite a bit. The last one is the new maintenance facility. We have about $200,000 in for design for the new maintenance facility for the next fiscal year, and then we were looking at going to construction in 2020, and we figure, we're projecting about $1 million for that facility. We're in the process of getting with the mechanics at the landfill to identify what kind of equipment they need, what that facility does. But it's going to have some office space in it. It's going to have a locker room for the employees, a shower if they want to shower before they go home, or if they have to go somewhere after work. So that's all moving forward. That, the maintenance facility will be the last major project at the landfill. That will give you more disposal capacity for 40, 50 years. That gives you a new scale house. Remember, two years ago, we paved all the roads going in. So you're going to have a Class A facility that will last you for the next 30, 40 years. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Ron. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron. I'll pick up and hit Peter Prince Airport in Navar Beach real quickly. Over the past 30 years, Peter Prince has expanded from a single 3,700-foot paved runway to a 3,700-foot paved runway, two parallel taxiways, rotating beacon, super-unicom, approach slope indicator, and 115 county-owned hangars. It is an excellent example of leveraging county dollars. Over the past 30 years, expended about $12.5 million, of which 3 million was the county match. The state contributed 5 million, and FAA another 5 million. Monies that, funds that used to generate the county match is those leases and rentals from the tee hangars. And the two FBOs that we have onboard, their lease fees, their rental fees associated with operating on Peter Prince. We have three projects underway, currently active. We have the East-West taxiway, as well as two new taxi lanes to support additional tee hanger construction. Funding was provided approximately 80, 20 match with FDOT providing 80% in the local match. The East-West taxiway should be, must be completed by June 30 of this year to preserve those grant dollars. And then the tee hangars design is 98% complete. We anticipate putting them out to bid this summer with a four- to six-month construction timeframe, and that'll be additional revenues that can be generated to be used on the airport. With this enterprise account, funds that are generated at Peter Prince must be expended on the airport or in support of the airport. So with that, any questions you have on Peter Prince? And then finally, Navar Beach, just to give you a highlight and hit notes on three projects ongoing, four projects ongoing at the Navar Beach Utilities. Lift station number seven was a complete rehabilitation, reconstruction of a major lift station, supporting the commercial core at Navar Beach. Came in at $560,000, and it's completed and working very well. We have the pier deck replacement, the estimated replacement cost of approximately $1.3 million as the Board took action two, a couple of meetings ago to rebid the project. It will, those bids will be back in June 13, next month. And we anticipate, it's a 270-day contract time, but they'll only be able to impact the pier for 90 of those consecutive days. And so that'll give adequate time for them to get the materials needed from the treatment facility, and as well as do it during the off-season. We would not anticipate this starting to sometime after, construction starting after Labor Day of this year. And the same...
Ron?
Yes?
Sorry to interrupt you. Just for the folks that obviously have a fiscal concern with impact of the pier, can you let me know roughly, can we go ahead and set, okay, here's the projected window that we would expect, that we could maybe go ahead and allow the contractor to know our wishes of the projected window for that 90 days to take hold in, to ensure that it was off-peak season rather than just wishful thinking?
That is something we do discuss in the pre-bid conference. We do not want to tie his hands, because one of the issues associated with trying to keep the costs down was the lead time associated with the material, treatment materials and providing those. So we don't want to be too exclusive, but we are saying that we want it to begin off-season as possible. But certainly, if you give someone 270 days and they have a 250-day lead time, they've got to do it during that last 20 days of the contract. But certainly, we will try to steer them off-season. But the way they can phase it, they could still construct even during peak season by doing, you know, those panels are three wide, so you do a third, a third, and a third as you go through. And each panel is not going to be, all the panels are not going to be taken up and replaced. They'll be intermittent. They'll take up a panel or two and bring new panels in and establish them.
Commissioner Beach? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I've been in touch with Roger on this one, and I've got a group out there, because, again, to coin our new phrase, I guess, expectation management. There's a solid group of fishermen, you know, that will help us spread the word. The pier contractor obviously will help us spread the word, the huge fishing rodeo that happens in October. So as this develops with the bids and things, you know, my plan at least is to be in step with Roger, have a good timeline, and do that expectation management so we can minimize, we'll never eliminate, the Facebook critics out there that like to ask questions. So I've got, started building a team. I'm going to work with Randy for that whole expectation management, because, you know, the fishing rodeo, and there's a lot that happens in that time of year. So the sooner we get this information and can lock it in, the better I think we'll be. So I'm on board with your comments as well.
Thank you.
And then finally, the restroom replacement. This is the old pavilion restroom. It's our oldest restroom facility there, built in the late '80s. Those construction costs are estimated 450. The design is near completion. They're working with their permitting through the coastal construction control line issues associated with constructing near the Gulf. And we anticipate that bidding this summer, again, it too will be constructed after Labor Day of this year. And then wellhouse number two, the Board just recently approved the engineering CEI to rehabilitate our oldest wellhouse. It houses well number two, built in 1970s. The veneer and the structural components on that building are failing, and so we are looking at a rehabilitation or outright replacement. That design should be completed... That design should be completed and the evaluation done late summer, and then we'll go out to bid as, as necessary this fall. And so with that, I would open up to any questions that the board may have for the engineering, Michael or Ron.
I would just add, sir, that's, that's not everything. I just, he's got a whole list, so I think we'll do this on a periodic basis and put this into bite-sized chunks so we can get regular updates on the projects. There are some that weren't covered today that I know are, you all are interested in, so we'll have the engineering team come back and hit those other ones next month, along with, Public Works is going to provide us an update next meeting.
And I would share with the board, I was going to set up Michael with, over the past 12 months, the board has approved over 50 different tasks, project, construction, engineering design, planning, and construction projects just within 12 months, and that's not, that not even talk about the other 100 or so that have been previously approved, so we will try to rotate and keep the board abreast on our projects. Thank you.
Commissioner Pete?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Roger, thanks. I know it's a huge task, working all these projects, and just again, what would be a little helpful as we evolve this process is maybe even, and I understand timelines and things, but for us, just a rough timeline to show, hey, this is the window pending permitting, this is about construction, because then I think we can help you with those folks out there, and I feel bad, I don't want to call you or Michael all the time and go, hey, what about this project? So I know we have several databases and Dan and the staff are working on things, so anything that would make it easier for you and have us bother you less to get updates on this stuff, I'm all behind, so I could just, if I get a quick question, I could pull it up instead of having to bug the staff and pull them off the important task of getting these things done. That would help. But thank you, and thanks, Michael.
I want to echo that appreciation and just take a moment to maybe at least one commissioner towards staff. The projects laid out today clearly will be extremely impactful to citizens everywhere from improved pedestrian safety, saving homes from flooding, better traffic management, bringing jobs to the industrial parks, safety on the piers, it just a wide array of things, as well as competent management of the landfill and the Peter Prince. So I would just hope that, clearly, we've got about three months before we ask the public to allow us to not only continue, but also kind of to coin what Roger mentioned there, to charge our engineering staff with even more fantastic projects that'll improve, improve the quality of life. So I would just like to see maybe between now and June, come back around with maybe some, some ideas of how we can make sure that as a county, we're just letting folks know about these great projects and what we're doing with them, because it's almost unimaginable, I thought about that when Roger said, the magnitude of workload, to think that, that this can go away in two years if we're not good stewards in making sure that we convey to our citizens how important it is and what they're getting for, and that a way they can decide if they don't want infrastructure improved, which I'm not hearing anybody say, then it'll go away, but if we could just make sure that, that we're getting that message out so that folks do understand why we're asking them to give us that other half cent in addition to it. With that, we now have, I think, the most beloved lady, at least in the mind and hearts of, of all of our sports associations out there. Are you getting shot, you're sticking me with Dan instead of Tammy? Okay.
It's going to be a group effort. Sheila was out this morning, yeah. Kevin is here from Mount McDonald, Tammy's going to be at the podium as well to answer questions, and I'm going to walk through the slides. We had a public meeting, Michael referenced Fidelis Recreation Improvements. We had a public meeting Tuesday night out at the cafeteria at Fidelis. We had a large group there, I would say 30-plus folks attended. Chairman Parker represented the board, staff, Sheila, and Kevin presented the, the project to get feedback, and we just wanted to provide an update to the board, let you know where we are on this project, what's next, and then talk about the, the future and community assessment. So there's, so there's really two elements to this, the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant project, which is the recreational improvements. That is a $200,000 grant that Commissioner Salter matched with $200,000 out of his district rec funds. Mount McDonald was one of those task orders that Roger mentioned that was led to, to do the design and improvements of the recreation. We tagged along that, with that, an assessment of the, of the school building, because there's a need for a community center. That's something we've heard consistently from, from that, the folks that live in the area there. What we found, this is an overview of the site. In the past, additional land has been sought unsuccessfully, so we're constrained to what's there in the, in the red hash-marked area. There were previous improvements from a FERDAP grant, and that in some ways complicates things, because you can't, you can't touch those things without having to, to pay back, if you will, the state, those, those prior improvements. The planned improvements are renovation of the basketball court. Kevin, you want to take this part?
Sure, sure.
I'll click for you.
All right, thank you. Kevin Morgan with Mount.
Hit the button, just hit the button.
You're good. Sorry about that. Kevin Morgan with Mount McDonald, appreciate the time. The grant improvements that we did out there on Fidelis and that hopefully go to construction midsummer will be, renovation of the site will include access, which will be your sidewalks, your ramps and stairs and facilities like that, new playground, basketball court will be restripped and lighting, baseball field will be enlarged and improved with lighting, and then we have a new playground area that I mentioned, tennis courts, and some picnic facilities also improved, and some landscaping that'll be involved with that. As you can see with the, the picture there, you can see in the turquoise, that's all the access that we're going to be providing with the new design. That allow parkgoers to come from parking lots, go through the existing buildings which have sidewalks currently, allow you to access all the facilities within the park, including the baseball field, the softball field, basketball court, the tennis courts, the playgrounds. Also, we'll be including a new rest area, which will be independent from having to go into the cafeteria like they are now, or having to go into the school building to use those facilities. They'll actually have a park restroom on site. Like I mentioned, Tammy's been working with the consultant on the design of the playground. I think it's going to be one of the nicest ones in the county. Picnic facilities will be added over there by the playground facility so that families will have that access, so they can see that sight distance to children on the playground, they can also watch their families while they're playing baseball or basketball. Just some updates, we started this project in December, we've completed the design, we're currently going through county development review, and once we get that approval from the review board, excuse me, it will go to construction. Just a little bit on the schedule, you can see here that we've completed all the tasks, we're in the bid process, we'll start that in May. Bid opening in June with our July hopefully awarding a contractor, and then in August going to construction. And then construction will go on during the off-season, and hopefully we'll be ready for use in February.
Turn my microphone back on. The design bid phase task order to Mount McDonald was about $55,000. The, the grant amount was $400,000 with the, the grant from the state and the matching funds. After completion of the design, the engineer's estimate of probable construction cost is approaching $800,000. We're working with Commissioner Salter on making up that difference out of his district rec funds, there will be some additional local option of sales tax for the ADA improvements, all that blue, light blue stuff that Kevin showed you on that slide is, is ADA accessibility. And so we'll, out of next year's LOST ADA funds, put some funds towards this project, and then we, I still need to wait for the, the bids to come in, but we, we know that the project is important, that Commissioner Salter's committed to the funding, and so we're going to go ahead with the bids. Those will be let this month, which is imminent, with those results coming back in June so that we can get the construction started as Kevin laid out during the off-season and get it complete. The main thing that is driving those additional costs is the amount of site work. A couple of things that were discovered in the design phase that is, to get the accessibility, we actually have to move one of the baseball fields. The baseball field that is being enlarged has to be moved to the west to allow access between the two fields, wheelchair, turning space, and those kinds of things, which means you have to move lights, which means you have to move utilities, and you got to move a whole bunch of earth. There's a, some swales and depressions that, that need to be addressed there, and that is the primary driver of that increase. Commissioner Salter, like I said, is committed to, committed to the project and to the funding. Once we get the bids in, we'll bring up an action back to the board to identify those resources and appropriate those funds. Wrong, wrong button, wrong way. Just cover that one. The long-term planning piece of this is, is the, the state historic matching grant program that's on the agenda, the consent agenda today. We're going to use some of the funding that's been committed to Fidelis Community Center. We originally, we're going to put a roof on that, on the school building, but we're looking at the overall preservation in a larger picture, and so we're going to use some of those funds to match the grant that Sheila's applying for, that, that grant is, the application is due June 1st. As you read in the newspaper, the Fidelis Community School is on the 11 to save list. Mr. Dobson from the J Historical Society was there Tuesday evening, and the significance of that is that, that 11 to save organization provides an ambassador for that site, and that ambassador will help facilitate grant applications, identify potential resources. So it's, it's a significant achievement to have it on that list, and will also hopefully allow resources to come to the project, which we would match to preserve and potentially renovate, and ideally end up with a functional community center at the Fidelis Park at some point in the future. I think, unless there are any questions from, from the board, I would, brief is in your backup. Tammy, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay.
Commissioner Pete?
Quick question. I apologize if I missed it. Is there going to be all-access equipment in the playground, or is it just going to be standard playground equipment?
It'll be just like the new playgrounds we're building now, that will be all-inclusive.
Awesome, awesome, because there's a lot of great feedback on those improvements, so thank you for that.
So Sheila and Mount McDonald are still working through some of the survey responses we got. Tuesday evening, there were over 30 respondents, either written or online. We were asking questions about future use, prioritization for community center and historic buildings and things like that, so that will be part of the planning process going forward with the, the school building and coming up with a community center, a functional community center there at the site. If there are any questions, we're going to proceed with the bid, and we'll bring that, that action back for, to appropriate and allocate the additional dollars once we get those bids in.
Thank you all, thank you very much. Tell you, a good tip I learned from attending that meeting is if you rent the Fidelis Community Center, get there a couple hours earlier and crank the air conditioner down. So, no, it's definitely needed. Thank you so much to everybody that gave us those presentations today. Next, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any members of the public or any of my fellow commissioners that have any objection to moving any of the items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I just have, I just have one thing I want to point out. There was a question that Clerk Spencer had regarding admin policy 80-1. We removed that, that section in the sentence that the clerk had a question about, but there are other elements of 80-1 that still need to be approved, so that's why you still see 80-1 on the, in the backup material, it's just a revised 80-1, and we're working with the clerk's office and some of the other constitutional officers on that, on that policy change, the other policy change.
Thank you. And again, thank you, Mr. Spencer, for bringing that point up so that we could try to revise that as best possible. All right, hearing no objection, we will approve the consent agenda. Next, that takes us to the regular agenda. We have no items under the Economic Development Committee, none under the Administrative Committee. This is an appointment for the Career Source Escarosa Board of Directors to appoint Michael Listau. We had discussed this on Monday. The only reason it needed to stay on the regular agenda is we just needed to notate that Commissioner Lynch will be recusing himself and will fill out the proper forms for that. With that, I would make a motion to approve notating Commissioner Lynch's abstention. I'll make that motion without objection. Hearing none, the item is approved. Item number two is advertising for the MSBU ordinances for public hearing. This is recommend approval to advertise for public hearings, the ordinances established in the new MSBU's. We had, had a good discussion on this Monday. We've had, I believe, we've got Mr. Stanley here today as well, if I'm not mistaken. Yep, this would be the time. If you want to come forward and give us a update on your request, I know you had, had the opportunity to reach out to me and some of the staff, if you'll give us the update and then provide us with your request, then hopefully we'll be able to move forward on this item today.
My name is Michael Stanley at 1694 Champagne Avenue.
You can pull it down if you need to. There you go.
Gulf Rees. Monday, I was here to get approval for MSBU for Auburn Parkway, Rutgers Road, and Yale Court, which is now Penn State Court. And we didn't have enough percentage of votes for Penn State, so I reevaluated the situation and in light of some opposition that was, happened on Monday, came up with the idea of putting in a cul-de-sac on Penn State to stop before it would end, the Penn State would end just before the two property owners were, that did not vote for the MSBU for Penn State. So in the packet that I gave you gentlemen, there's a, a map showing an orange circle, which indicates the cul-de-sac, and as you can see, it doesn't go down onto the, the road, it won't continue on down alongside of the properties that are owned by the two property owners on the corner of Duke and Penn State. So in deleting the two property owners, this leaves just nine votes required. I have seven yes and two no, which equals 77%. The advantage of, one of the advantages of adding the cul-de-sac is in places, in place of the, running the road all the way to Duke, is that the stormwater would, would be diverted directly into, onto the retention pond, which, the retention pond is going to be purchased by the MSBU, and that would be Lot 4, Block 4 on Penn State, and that retention pond backs up to the existing retention pond that's on Georgetown. So in essence, the property owners from, from Lots 1 and 2, Block 5, and Lots 2 and 3, Block 4, will be deleted from the MSBU, and that will be, will not be assessed for any road improvements. Penn State will have road improvements to make a better environment for the community. By approving Penn State for the MSBU, it eliminates any potential safety hazard, hazards such as fire and personal injury, and provide emergency vehicle access to the property owners. The fire department will have access to fire hydrant, for fire protection. The property owners would not be affected, the property owners that would be affected would have safe access to their property. It doesn't matter how many lots I own, I only get one vote. I threw that in. I'm excited to do this project because it cleans up the area and has been an eyesore for years. The previous MSBU that was done is a great example of what was done in the community. The previous MSBU that was done is a great example of what was done in the community. Also, by adding Penn State to the project, it will continue to help with revenue for the county and bring some need monies for schools and road improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. I think this is Commissioner Lynch's district, I'll defer to him if he has a suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, this is, all we would be doing is approving the, approving a future hearing on the resolution, is that correct, Roy?
Yeah, we're being...
Correct language there.
The action today would be to approve the advertising for the ordinance, which would be brought back before the commission to actually put the MSBU's in place.
And this is an engineering-only MSBU, this is not for construction?
That's correct.
So there will be an engineering phase that'll take place over the next twelve months, and after that, it would have to be repetitioned, and then a construction phase brought forward. So they, everyone on that street will get another look at it before construction would move forward.
Commissioner Nicole?
Mr. Chairman, the other day I closed this, I fully support this idea.
Commissioner Peach?
I just have a question, run through the numbers. So these folks, because if you change it to cul-de-sac, some that voted yes may go, hey, I didn't want a cul-de-sac, I want a through street. So those folks will have to sign another petition? Because to me, this is changing it to a cul-de-sac after they were told it's a through street, and if they weren't informed, it's gonna now be a cul-de-sac. I might, if it was me, change my vote and go, hey, I don't want to be on a cul-de-sac, so don't pave it. That's all I worry about is, how were these residents that voted yes informed that it's now gonna be a cul-de-sac when they actually signed a petition saying it was gonna be a through street?
And one of the questions I had asked staff earlier this morning was whether the people had been contacted, specifically Mr. Ibrahim, who objected to this. So I'm comfortable moving forward with it, but I would ask that prior to our hearing, our next discussion of this, that we get an affirmative acknowledgement from the people on this street that they're willing to move forward. The people who said yes already, let's get them to say yes again, because the scope of it is changing, and that'll give the board some comfort and assurance that the people on Penn State are still comfortable with the project.
The, and the project comes up for vote in August, correct?
Whenever it's scheduled, we have the advertising requirements, it probably would be July to August. And then the rate has to be, the rate hearing has to be set in August.
So if there's any public comment, it can be brought up at that time?
In July, and then again in August. I mean, all of our meetings, we can take public comment.
Right, so I mean, to go back to these people and, I don't think there's a problem for the people that have signed yes, I don't think there's a problem that, you know, the consensuses that I got that they were just happy to have a paved road. You know, there's no advantage to them for it to be a through road because their traffic pattern would be to go south on Penn State to Cornell Drive and then...
Agreed, so you have a month and a half probably, at least, to go back and contact those seven owners, you're one of them, and just get them to indicate in writing that they're still good moving forward with the MSBU for engineering. I think that's fair.
And then just one more for clarification. As I look on the property appraisers, I see all the lots here, but there's the lot that ends in zero, one, two, zero, that's listed as owned by Chernock. Barry Chernock isn't on the petition.
Right, the corner ones at Cornell are, but his lot isn't included.
There was a lot that was owned by Patterson, and he sold it to Chernock.
Okay.
So that's, that'll be on the next petition.
Okay, yeah, because I see Patterson with Lot Zero, One, Zero, but I don't see him for Zero, One, Two, Zero, so that's all I was curious. Okay. Yeah, I'd go with that. I just want to make sure, y'all, because we're changing someone's vote, so I just want to make sure they're good with that.
Mr. Chairman, Nicole.
So you just need to get the, you're wanting to get the clarification on the ones that originally signed the petition, or do you want the ones that are now property owners?
Current property owners are the ones that are gonna get the bill, yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, if you might, does this change with taking these out of the equation, does it change the cost that was described of the current yes votes?
It would change something, yes, sir.
We may, you know, when we're asking for that reaffirm, you know, of it being a cul-de-sac, should that be included in the questioning? Would you still say yes if it's a cul-de-sac and it's gonna be another fifty bucks a year, whatever it happens to be?
I think it's gonna reduce the cost of the engineering, because you're not, you're eliminating about two-hundred-and-fifty feet of engineering for the road.
I agree, you know, you're doing major improvements, plus they don't ever have to deal with people cutting through their neighborhood, so.
The, if I could, the cost will take care of itself, because if the estimate comes back and it's more than twenty-five percent above the estimate per lot, then it would have to go out for bid again anyway. So I think that's kind of a self-policing issue there.
Again, this is just for the engineering portion of it? So if there's any, if there's any residual costs from the, from this MSBU for the engineering, it could be added into the construction cost on the, on the repetition?
I would only ask, and I think this will sum it up, if you will just make sure you coordinate after the meeting, sometime over the course of the next month, with Commissioner Lynch, and Mr. Andrews, and Mr. Bruton, between the three of them, if you will just run by, you know, as he mentioned, make sure that you have some sort of written documentation that is suitable to these gentlemen. I'm sure it would be suitable to the rest of the board, and just get that reaffirmation, and then we'll be good to go.
It shouldn't be a problem.
All right, thank you. All right?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, so I think we have cleared this up, but in addition to Mr. Stanley's MSBU request, there are three other new MSBU's that are part of this advertisement and this action. I just want to make sure we didn't lose sight of that. There's two lighting MSBU's, Pace Mill Creek and Stone Chase, as well as Hidden Shores Subdivision Improvement MSBU. So there are four new MSBU's that are going out for advertisement, is what the action is to approve today.
Okay.
One other question. At Monday's meeting, we talked about combining Rutgers and Auburn as, into one MSBU for economic reasons?
This will be, this will be one MSBU for the three streets.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
That's the way we would advertise it, and that's what we would entertain at the public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further comment from the public or fellow commissioners, I'll make a motion to approve all of these MSBU ordinances without objection. Hearing none, that item's approved. Item number three, I had my questions fulfilled from Monday. The reason I had to ask this is to stay on the regular agenda. This is just a discussion of approval of Greystone Consulting as the Santa Rosa County Military Affairs Consultant. If there's no questions or comments from any members of the public or the board, I will make the motion that we make that approval without objection. Hearing none, the item's approved. Item number four is the Navar Beach Fire Department request. We had this discussion Monday. I believe, I don't know if Chief's coming back up or anyone. Roy, are you satisfied with the language that you received?
Yeah, the language that's in the backup is the language that I think's appropriate.
Okay, all right. Do we have any other questions or comments from any members of the public or board members? If not, we're gonna approve their request without objection to have that added to the referendum. See, Chief, you are definitely rocking the tan this year. We appreciate all y'all do, we really do. I know y'all have tremendous support from your leaseholders out there. Item number five is the meeting list. The meetings that are published here are for the month of June. Do we have any questions or comments on the meeting list from any members of the public or county staff or board members? Dan?
Just wanted to highlight, we have our budget workshops with the P O C C departments, as well as the constitutional officers, scheduled on June eighteenth. That will be the week before our next meeting. Just to make sure everybody's aware and invite the public to come to those budget workshops.
Mr. Chairman? I don't see our scheduled rezoning meeting for the end of June. Did it not get put on here?
Should have been for the twenty-seventh. Yeah, you're right. Should have been for six PM on the twenty-seventh.
We will add that, make sure that's in the advertisement.
All right. So thank you very much, Commissioner Nicole, for pointing that out. So I will make a motion to approve this list with the addition of the June twenty-seventh special rezoning meeting at six PM. I'll make that motion without objection. Hearing none, the item's approved. Have no further items on the engineers report or public services. We do need to have Commissioner Lynch address one public work committee.
Mr. Chairman, item number one is discussion of awarding of the sodding of Fields Two, Four, and Five at the Navar Football Soccer Park to Riles Grassing in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, fifty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents as the low bidder meeting specification. Funding is from District Four Recreation Funds.
This is an add-on from Monday's meeting. Commissioner Peach?
We just got the bids in, and in order to meet the new season and get the grow-in, that's why we added this to the agenda, so I appreciate your cooperation in getting that on. Also, just as, for folks' awareness, we're gonna be, I'd like to ask staff to look at the possibility of purchasing a mower for this group. I know we've done it for the other groups, because I've been working with the extension folks, and we're gonna change the agreement a little bit with M Y S N, how they manage the fields and how they cut them, and how they rotate them, so we can get a little more life, hopefully, out of these major expenses for re-sodding. There's been some great input. My hat's off to the extension staff, Matt Lawler up there, our new turf expert, who's really gonna, I think, help us with our sports fields, if we can get the organizations to work with us on rotations and rest periods and things, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I would absolutely support that if you could have staff, obviously knows the agreement we've made with soccer park and baseball park up in mine and Don's area, and just have them mimic that and come back, and I'll just also mention, you may have them reach out up there to the West Florida Soccer Park if they ever had questions. I know those guys would probably be gracious to host them. They were just sharing with me this past weekend, you know, me and Commissioner Salter get the pleasure of being out there homeless every Saturday with kids playing, and since they've had the addition of the extra mowers now, and they can, they actually keep it cut a little lower, and of course, they water it in different programs, but I mean, it's unbelievable how good the turf looks, so just want you to make sure you let them know that there's a resource up there, too.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, item's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And then we'll go to Commissioner Peach for one item under the Budget and Financial Management Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one item, custodial services. This is discussion on the approval of the board to reject the bids that were received April twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. We previously talked about this on Monday, for custodial services and to rebid those services with, by the bid specs and scope of work. I'll turn it over to Dan if there's any discussion or question.
I think one of the, there are a couple of reasons. One was a technicality here on this. The second one is the bigger one, and Tammy's left, but Stephen's familiar with the issue. The Department of Corrections has notified us that they will be, that at some point in the future, I don't know if they've given us a date, inmate crews will no longer be allowed to work in parks where there might be folks less than seventeen years of age. That has a major impact, as that inmate crew that we get for the Parks Department cleans our facilities on Monday mornings throughout the county. So that's, that's the change in scope that we would add to this custodial services contract, because we don't have the staff to do that. We would add that second cleaning to this future bid that we'll go out for. The other impact, we haven't figured out how to address yet, and that's, that inmate crew is the one that does all the brush cutting, the weed eating along the fence lines, three of them ride mowers, so it's a significant impact to our regular workforce by not having them, and there's really not a workaround. We can't shut down a park for half a day in the summertime so that we can mow the grass with an inmate crew. So staff is working through, looking at options, and we don't have anything yet to present to the board on that, but it will be a big difference.
Dan, if you will, just remind me, at the beginning of the discussion there, what triggered this? I apologize, if you'll just tell me that one more time.
What triggered the change?
The, yeah, for the inmates, to have the issue with the inmates?
It was an email from Department of Corrections. Stephen, I don't know if you have any specifics, but it was, it's a policy that's, I guess, been in place, that has not been...
So from DOC? This is from the state side?
From Department of Corrections, yes.
That's correct. It is, has been a DOC policy that the prisons have not, and the corrections officers have, I guess, seen fit to exercise their discretion on, you know, probably given their knowledge of the inmates that they're working. We haven't had any problems. I don't think this is a Santa Rosa County issue, I think it's a state issue. The Secretary of the Department of Corrections made a visit earlier this, or I think last Thursday, and they went to a park, they went to the Benny Russell Park. There were quite a number of young children working there. Our inmate crew was there with the corrections officers, doing what they do. No issues, no problems, but the Secretary for the Department of Corrections, I guess, recognized that that was a violation of a policy that they have, and he directed the prison here to adhere to that policy. And so we found out about it beginning of this week.
Yeah, I don't, obviously, just hearing about it for the first time, have any immediate, hard-found solutions. Only thing I could think is, worst case, we shuffle those inmates to clean out drainage ditches and doing other things that we may would, you know, surplant.
Certainly, we are already discussing, you know, a Plan A if they're not able to work in the parks. Currently, the inmates that are working in the parks are continuing to work on some of our recreation parks, like the Sportsplex, where they're spraying weed killer along the fences, where there are no children anywhere in the vicinity. So, you know, in a very short term, we are keeping them busy, but not in parks where there are currently children.
We'll put them down there in Holly by the Sea, help them with those ditches.
And that is, you know, certainly, we don't want to lose these contracts, because the value to the county and the public is extremely beneficial, and we are gonna try to keep these contracts with the Department of Corrections, even if they're not working in the park systems.
Commissioner Nicole?
Thank you. Dan, did understanding say if the park was closed, we could still, they could still work the park?
I think, I think that's an operational issue. We would have to get approval, but I don't know that it's feasible to close Benny Russell Park in the summertime for any period of time to get the work done. The Sportsplex, or maybe soccer complexes and things like that during the school day, it's feasible to still get some utilization, but I don't think it's, it's not an appropriate action to close the park in the summertime, just so that we can use the inmate crew to clean that park.
Thank you. Yeah, again, I don't, I'm sure they can bring something back to us a month from now at the next meeting. I, again, my first thought is throw those guys cleaning ditches in Holly by the Sea and hire some more folks to, for Tammy to manage, I guess, but...
Well, we're looking, we're looking at options. I mean, this is related to the custodial services, and we'll add some scope to this rebid so that we can get a second cleaning per week out of the contract, and then we're looking at the mowing, landscaping, trimming, weed eating, all those sorts of, all that functionality, and how do we restructure, and what are the options?
Thank you. All right, we...
Did we approve that? I'll bring it up for you. Recommend approval without objection to reject the bids and rebid those services with the revised bid specifications and scope.
All right, hearing no objection, that motion's approved. Last item, we have public forum. I know some of you have so graciously waited along with us today. Do we have any members of the public that would like to address the board with any questions or comments that we haven't already covered today? If you do, just come forward, and when you get to the podium, if you will, for Ms. Amanda, just please state your name and address for the record, and then thank you for being here.
Elizabeth Major, nineteen hundred Reserve Boulevard, Gulf Breeze. I'm here representing the League of Women Voters and the Southern United Neighbors. It was on the agenda for Monday, I understand, and you didn't get to it, and they asked me to come today?
We approved that.
You approved it, okay.
We did.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. Any other members of the public that are here to speak to the commission today during public forum? All right, hearing none. Thank you for coming. The meeting's adjourned.